Hello and welcome to the Chapukah Library, our board meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:00. And, okay, we have Brian Cook is not here tonight, one of the trustees. And that's it. And we welcome our two visitors, the director of the Pound Ridge Library and the director of the Irvington Library.
I'm just, I'm head of children.
Head of children. Okay, okay, welcome. We're glad that you're here. Thank you. Okay, we're going to rise and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a couple of exits that should be noted, to my right, your left, my left, your right, okay? And no changes were made to the agenda. We have added a couple, I guess we are changing to the agenda, we have added a couple of things. And we can get started. Any public comments, Amy? No, thank you. We welcome public comments, we just don't have any tonight. Okay, let's start with the board meeting minutes, Jennifer?
Sure. I move that the board approve the minutes of the September 23rd, 2024 regular meeting as drafted.
Any seconds? John? Okay. It looks great. Thank you so much for doing it. And any discussion? Okay, take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. unanimous? Okay, moving on to finance, the treasures report.
Okay.
Any?
Yeah. Okay. I read, read the report from, from Kyle at Noraki, and things seem to be essentially the same, there are 11 checks outstanding, this is not out of line. Jennifer had raised some concerns about the absence of POs and signatures, and you've informed, I don't want to speak for you, correct me if I'm wrong, you informed Kyle that we don't do the, we don't use POs. So hopefully that won't show up in his report in the future. The, the approval signatures, I'm not sure about, though.
So when, after their, after Noraki Smith's site visit in October, we told them again that we don't use purchase orders, so they asked that we sign up, that I sign off on all the invoices. So that's what we've been doing. So when they came for their site visit about a week ago, they were pleasantly surprised that, or, you know, I shouldn't say surprised, but they were happy to see that a lot of, lot of the transactions had been signed off on, so.
So that's just what they were looking for? Yeah. Okay. You, you specifically to sign off on?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Now, the transactions that are still not, that are still outstanding, are these rolling trends, are these the same ones that haven't been resolved, or are they new ones?
Some of them are, I think most of them are new ones, you know, there's always just some times people just don't cash their checks in a timely manner. So I think that we are going to continue to see that phrase on these reports.
Okay. I mean, there was nothing else that I saw remarkable in this report. So should I make a motion to accept the report?
Yes, please.
I move that we accept the treasures report for September 2024.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay.
In favor?
In favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And Jen, thanks for bringing progress to this process.
Thank you.
Do we want, should I make the motion about moving to, do that now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Great, this is a motion that we don't have listed in the agenda. Okay, it's a new motion.
All right, we discussed at our meeting just this evening about changing the financial report schedule to a quarterly instead of a monthly basis. This would, we feel that it's, that the monthly is not necessary, and that it would save us quite a bit financially if we moved to a quarterly instead of monthly. So again, I might make the motion that the board move to receive the financial report on a quarterly basis instead of a monthly basis. And did we decide when that would begin, immediately, or?
I think, yes, I think we did agree, well, would we like to take a vote on having it start immediately?
I'm just saying that Kyle may have already begun on October.
It'll probably be in November, we probably want to do it, right? Because it's already October.
It already happened for October.
It's already done?
October's already done, yes, Leila was here last week.
So if we want to do it quarterly starting now, that would be January.
Okay.
Okay, so starting January 2025.
So apologies, I misunderstood when, when we had an advanced discussion on this. I thought we were changing their monthly bookkeeping activity and oversight, not changing that we would have a monthly financial report in each board packet.
No, we will have a monthly, correct. I think you're correct. It's terminology, that they're not going to come, they're not going to come to, physically come to the building anymore to do monthly audits. We're going to move to a quarterly audit. Always getting the monthly reports.
Right, right.
Okay.
To, to be completely nitpicky on language, I think that the language we utilized when we added their services in 2023 on a monthly basis were bookkeeping oversight, something along those lines. So I just want to be careful with the audit terminology.
And I think, you know, I'm wondering, I agree with you, Jen, about just making sure our terminology is correct, so, so the motion is going to be to move to have Noraki Smith do, continue to, right, to move their onsite visits to quarterly while maintaining monthly financial reports.
So we want to change the, the monthly financial audit that they do onsite, the site audit, from monthly to quarterly?
Correct.
So should I state that again officially, do we need to do that?
Yeah, just do it one more time.
Sure. Okay, I move that we change the monthly site audit to a quarterly occurrence instead, while still receiving the monthly financial report from Noraki Smith.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Want to move to a vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, the president's report. While I did mention this last month, this is somewhat of an ongoing thing, that we are engaged with the architect firm Lothrup. And thank you to John and Brian who attended initial meeting, as well as Bill Link, our facilities manager, Jennifer, our dear director, and some department heads. And Lothrup is the firm we are also using for the children's space reconfiguration project. We received a New York State construction grant for work on the new AV equipment totaling $45,000. On 9/28, the library participated in the Chapukah Book Festival, as it does every year. We're very appreciative of all the staff that helped make the book festival a success. Tonight's trustees are going to vote on the facilities policy, and I'm very proud to say that each of the library's 23 policies, because some of them are like, you know, national, like, policies, so I didn't count them, have all been revised and updated in the past two years. And so in addition, our long-range strategic plan called for all the library policies to be updated, and we are very pleased to have accomplished this in two years. So, thank you, everybody. Jennifer, our director, has started work on updating the employee handbook. On November 5th, the personnel committee, which includes myself, John Harrison, and Jennifer Fahey, it will be a meeting that will go, the notice will go out to the public about it, as, because there's more, more than two trustees. And we'll be meeting with Jennifer to work on this, and hopefully we will be able to have the final version presented, presented to the board at the November board meeting for a vote. Thank you, and I encourage everybody to come out and vote on November 5th in this year's election. Thank you so much.
Pam, just a question, the construction grant, that was payment for what they had previously agreed.
Correct, correct. So it's money that's already been, it's not extra money? I mean, it feels a little extra, because we've already paid, but it's, we're happy to have it back into our account.
Yeah.
Can I make one more comment on that motion about the audit? We're go, we need to say that we're going to terminate the monthly immediately. I mean, he's already done the October, we're going to start, the next one will be in January, and then quarterly after that. Is that correct? Do I need to contact Kyle and let him know?
No, I will. But I can CC you on the emails.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Can you CC me all subs on that email?
Yep.
So the next, the next site order will be in January 2025.
Fantastic. Library, you're up.
Thank you, Doke. So Pam, as you said, we have received over $45,000 in construction grant money for our new AV equipment here in the theater. In addition, we received word that we are also going to receive $10,769 from Senator Harkum's office for bullet aid. It's my understanding at this time that we're not allowed to use this money for facilities purpose, but more for programming. I have some online paperwork that I need to fill out to complete all of this, and I'll find out more information about that when I do, and I will report back to everybody once I have that. But all good news, this is, almost $60,000 we're getting, and it will be well-used.
Fantastic.
Yeah. The circulation department has asked me to pass on to the board that their monthly department meetings have been an enormous help in keeping everyone in the loop and updated. Marge Perlin has specifically said that these meetings have been a game changer for her department. So I pass that on, just so you guys know, that it's, it's really these Thursday morning trainings and department head meetings and staff meetings that we're doing are, are great, and they have, I think they've really helped to foster communication with everybody.
So this relates to the later opening Thursdays?
Yes, 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 exactly. So one, so the first Thursday of the month is an all-staff meeting, second is a staff training, the third is department meet, department meetings, then the fourth is a training, and then if, if there's a fifth Thursday of the month, then we all go, we, we, we just kind of have like a group get-together, so.
I mean, I have to imagine it's also creating, you know, in post-COVID, and, and having cycled through some, some directors here, that it's really helping cohesiveness in the larger, you know, with everybody as well as in the departments.
I think it is, I think it is. And you know, on those fifth Thursdays, like, we get, we get coffee and tea from Bobos, and, you know, we just kind of sit around and discuss whatever we want to discuss, so it's been really nice.
Fantastic.
The Newcastle Historic Society had, we had loaned them several pieces for an exhibit that they had in the spring. When they returned those pieces, they asked if we would consider donating them. And I do think it would be a good idea to do so, because we don't really have anywhere to store those things here. And I worry that, I worry they could get damaged or lost, and I've seen stuff like that happen in previous libraries that I've worked in, so I don't know if that's something you guys want to discuss now, or, and vote on, or mull over.
Sure, we can do that. So I'm just trying to think where that motion would go. So, oh, you know what? Why don't we put that motion in building and grounds? Okay? But do you want to do, I don't want to interrupt the flow of your report.
Oh, that's fine, I just have a couple of other little things.
Okay.
So we have the facilities use policy, which I worked on with Amy and Robin and Marge, and, as well as input from all the department heads. And so that's ready to be voted on if, if, if that's found to be acceptable. And the last thing I wanted to just mention, well, a couple of things I want to mention. We have been lucky enough to have a painting by Robert Goodnow that has hung for a while in our theater lobby, and we are going to move that painting over to the main section of the library. Yeah, so that people can enjoy it, because I've been told by people they don't even know there's a painting there, even though it's so hot.
Right.
So we're working to stain the facade in the front of the building over the periodicals white. Our custodian is going to work on that with our art curator, and then we're gonna, we're actually having the canvas restretched, because it's, it's seen better days, and I'm worried about the damage to it. And then we're going to hang it in the front, which is.
Who's doing the restructuring?
Larry is overseeing it. So, yeah. So he's, that's his area of expertise, so I want him to run with it. And then, one more thing, and just a couple of separations, people who have gone off to college, and somebody who's just gone on to other opportunities, Ben Millerman and Amy Gutierrez. We would just like to say thank you to them for their service to the library, and wish them well in the future.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jen, could you just mention this bees issue?
The bees issue, yeah.
And I'm sorry that Lothrup wasn't here when the bees were here.
They were for some of them.
Oh, they were, okay. Hey, just, because I imagine there's some people in the community that might have known about this bees and the children's room.
Yeah, well, anybody who visited the children's room got to see firsthand. So we had one nest that was in the, the entrance way to the theater. They had borrowed a nice big nest there, and then they started appearing in the children's room, and I assumed that it was the same nest, but when we got McHale here to investigate, I was up on the roof with McHale, and there was an opening in the facade. There were a couple of openings in the facade where they were getting in and getting into the light fixtures and into the bathroom, the toddler bathroom in the children's room. So there was actually a couple of days where we closed the children's room because it was so bad.
Okay.
But McHale came, I have to say, they were great, they explained everything really well, and they did what they had to do, and we were told that it would take a few days to, you know, start to taper off, and I think it's behind us now.
Patrons were notified and taken care of.
They were, and I have to commend the children's room department, because when we had to close the children's room, they took the standing desk that they have, they stood at the front door of the children's room, and they were, say, they told everybody, "I'm sorry, you can't come in, but we can get whatever materials you want, and let's take you to the program room where there's a train table."
There we go.
And plus, the days happened to be beautiful, so people could sit outside in the courtyard, and everybody was really understanding about it.
Just wanted to give a little narrative.
Yeah, yeah, it was very exciting.
I'm sure it was.
Any honey?
No, unfortunately not.
So with the BNG hat on, holes in the facade is not good, obviously, so Bill Link is on this?
So I knew about some, I know that's, I know about the facade, a lot more about the facade since the site visit from Lothrup, and that is something that will have to be addressed. Bill did plug up one hole on the facade, but then the bees found another couple of holes to get into, so we just, last week, we just left the holes alone to let the bees slowly move on to greener pasture, so.
And so did McHale patch up, or they did something to get them to go away? Did they patch, fill in any holes, or no?
No, they were just there to.
To move the nest?
And it was, I will say, it was my mistake, because I had Bill come and patch the hole that I called him into soon, and then that's when the bees found another way to get into the children's room, and then the gentleman from McHale said, "Do not patch anything, just let them come and go and die slowly," so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But are you saying that the, the rotting wood, is that going to be remediated, is some future point where it plans to do that?
We have to. I mean, we will have to address the entire exterior of this building at some point. I mean, more information is to come, but I can tell you that we have roots of trees growing into the facade, and we have moisture issues over by the, the garden, I'm sorry, by the courtyard, so it is something that will have to be addressed in time. And those things will have to be addressed sooner, rather than some other things that have been pointed out to me.
I think when we, again, when we get the building assessment, and they're going to let us know, like, which, what priority, correct, is what?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
One more thing.
Yes, please.
We, there has been some talk about, the BNG front, about getting a tree outside of the children's room, and I spoke to Jay Vasquez, and he is going to get us a beautiful magnolia tree, and he has agreed to plant it and do all, do everything he needs to do, and it's only going to cost us $750, so that's great news.
Yeah, so Jen, under building and ground, we'll make a motion to spend that? Or do we not have to?
That's within Jen's.
Okay, great, so no motion is needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's at the entrance, right?
Yes.
So that corner?
Yeah, and so I know that that's been on the wish list, so that's really great.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
And I have a question about the, the children's reference desk redesign.
Uh huh.
Room redesign. How does fixing the lighting above the reference desk cost $45,000? I, I just.
Yeah, and that's actually not the, I mean, it could have been much, much more money than that. So there's a lot of conversations that are still happening around that redesign. I don't know if, if that lighting part of it is going to be done. I think there needs to be discussions with Robin and the children's staff about what their priority is, and what the friends are willing to help us with. And they've been very generous, and they have indicated to us that they are willing to give some more money, but they said by no means can they, they fund the entire project.
Right.
It's mainly because of the construction issues, and lighting, lighting is expensive, so.
So what, what bizarre that it's so expensive? The, the lighting now is in such a way that it reflects off of their computers? And again, as Robin and Jen, as they're reworking, you know, what's going to happen there, I think they're going to decide, they're going to figure out, like, what's a priority. When we get the entire design scope from Lothrup, we will all have to decide.
Right.
Especially the trustees, what, you know, what is viable work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're still, they're still having discussions.
They're still working on it, yeah.
So nothing is.
Like, they may come back and say, you know what? Like, we're fine with the library, we're not going to do it.
Okay.
You know, we're, so we're, that's why it wasn't really brought up tonight, because it's not, it's not in any sort of plan or stone at this time.
I mean, and I wonder if just some kind of task lighting would, would solve that there is the problem for them as well, I don't know.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Jen, I wanted to bring to our attention this item in your report about the adult services librarian who was hired from the competitive service, civil service list, who's been eligible. And maybe we can vote on that next month? I think that is a personnel change in terms of salary.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything that can, that needs to be voted on, because it's something we have to do. This person was eligible for benefits, because she was hired off of a competitive list, and this is going back years ago. We do not, we will not be hiring in this category.
I saw that, you mentioned that in the next, in the next page.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear that when someone comes and has their salary changed, though, is that not something the board votes on?
Salary, yes, but this is not a salary change, this is just, she has just opted to opt into the health benefits that the library offers.
So it's, it's receiving of benefits that is offered to other full-time employees of the library?
Correct, correct. And she never, she never chose, she chose not to ever participate up until now.
Right. And as you mentioned, just to, for public record, that we're sunsetting that provision.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions or thoughts on the director's report?
I just want to call out that Robert Goodnow is also the artist behind the modern red painting in front of our, or, painting, sculpture in front of our library.
Oh.
Yeah.
So very diverse capabilities.
Part of the idea of moving his painting to the location we want to move it to is so that they will look at each other.
Oh.
Yeah.
George, finance committee, anything to report?
Nothing in addition to just the financial report from Noraki Smith.
Fantastic. Jen, any building and grounds?
Well, we're going to make a motion to Jen's point on the artwork, right?
Yes, yes.
So I will move that the board approve the library director, working with the Newcastle Historic Society, to transfer historic artworks that are not currently displayed in the Chapukah Library for better safekeeping.
Do I have a second? Yes. Any discussion? Okay, um, discussion, it, are there, do we have any more art that, you know, floating around this building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of?
Well, no, actually, there is.
There's Picasso in the.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You're Indian.
Yeah, there's, there's a large painting in the back that should be discussed at some point, that nobody seems to know what to do with, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I forgot about that.
We have discussed it, it was agreed it would be removed, and someone chose not to do so.
Oh, so when we say removed, how does it get removed? Like, goes to the garbage?
We talked about whether it should be, you know, listed for sale or donated, and the board position was that the material was so objectionable that it should just be disposed of.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That was a board before I was on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we can talk about that.
Are you testing your memory?
Something objectionable that I would have probably remembered, but, you know.
It's Native American imagery.
Oh, wow, so politically incorrect, yeah.
So I don't think the library should sell it. I don't think that would be tasteful.
It's half the size of that.
It's huge.
So, does that work, that we could, okay, so staying within the, the lane of this, this motion that's on the table, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, they'll be so happy.
Great.
Thank you for working with the Historic Society.
Oh, they're wonderful, we're so lucky to have them.
John Harrison?
So the personnel committee, well, there's nothing, I think, to vote on, other than just to say that we're working on the handbook, we're having a meeting on November 5th that will lay out some of the details on the personnel committee. Yeah, that's.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you. And also policy bylaws.
Policy, so the facilities use policy, the last of the policies that will need to be edited. I'll say one thing, just to shout out, is that I did a board training earlier this year, and the one thing that was underscored was the importance of boards having policies that were current. And the boards that don't have policies that are current oftentimes leave themselves in enormous gaps, and all sorts of problems emerge. So kudos to everyone who has done work on this, that has sort of taken the public's trust and protected the interests of the library and the citizens who fund this, so thank you. So anyhow, the facilities use policy is available in board packet, I don't, do we just summarize, or I think we just can say, I propose that the board receive the facilities use policy, is that it? Sam? Okay, excellent. I'll say aye, any in favor? Aye?
No, I want to have a little discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry, discussion.
So, so on the, on the website, the facilities policy. So, so on the, on the website, the facilities policy, like, covers three different, like, they have it on three different lines, right? Are we going to do away with that and just keep this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so the application will indicate if somebody wants to use the program room or the theater, so.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
I had one question, and this is probably way too academic a question, but let's say hypothetically, somebody who's promoting a very objectionable cause wants to rent this space.
Other local Westchester libraries have double.
You know, something, something really repugnant, that we would all find completely objectionable. Do we have any way of saying no thank you to those groups?
I think we do.
We do, okay.
It's our building, and it's director, like, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that we have the capacity to say no thank you to a group that wants to rent this space.
I'll give you, I'm kind of glad you brought this up. I'll give you an example. We have a lot of amazing high school students here, and we've had several approach us with ideas for programming, and it's gotten to be a bit unwieldy because we need staff to help out, or, you know, they, they want to use the AV equipment that we spent all this money on, and we're not letting anybody touch the AV equipment unless they've been trained. And so we have this lovely young person who is doing a panel this weekend on careers in STEM, careers in science, and, you know, he's been great to work with, but I said to him, this is the last one we're going to, we're going to host for students at Horace Greeley High School because it has taken up way too much time to organize and put these things on, and then to have people on hand to help if there's a glitch in, you know, technology or something like that, so, you know. And I had to do it because, not because I wanted to do it, but because I don't have X amount of hours in a day to do it to this, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any other discussion points? Okay, we can take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all pass.
Thank you.
Yay, so exciting. Okay, Brian's not here for communications committee, but he did not share that there was anything to share.
Okay.
Next steps? We don't have any. We have a special meeting on November fifth. To discuss the handbook, employee handbook, and our next meeting is November.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. Okay, it's moved that the board adjourn this public meeting at seven thirty-three PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
George? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.